And we're ready whenever you are, ma'am.
Thank you, Kathy. Good evening, and thank you for attending tonight's city council meeting. For those who are attending remotely, the camera in council chambers is set up to show those attending in person tonight. The platform we are using has a raise hand feature. You will notice a picture of a hand in the upper right-hand corner. When we reach the point in the meeting where the public has the opportunity to address council, you can click that button to be given your opportunity to address council. Before we stand for the pledge, unfortunately, again, tonight, we'll have a moment of silence in memory of Robert England Sr., who passed away last Friday. Robert served as a firefighter in the Augsburg Fire Department for 20 years, retiring in 1983. We extend our condolences to Robert and his family. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kathy, please call the roll.
Mayor Tulley?
Here.
Councillor Selly?
Here.
Councillor Powers?
Here.
Councillor Scamperley?
Here.
Councillor Stevenson?
Here.
Councillor Trim?
Here.
Councillor Weaver?
Here.
Quorum present.
Thank you. We do not have any presentations or public hearings tonight, so we'll begin with personal appearance. At this time, if anyone attending in person would like to address council, please come down to the podium. You will have five minutes.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Bob Flavin. I am speaking about these motorcycles and their excessive noise that goes on around the city. I have brought a copy of the New York State law that Kathy Hulk will sign. Basically, it says that these guys running around with the straight pipes, anybody who modifies them, against the law, things like that. These motorcycles are just getting louder and louder and louder. And there are a few of them that use New York Avenue, go down across the Twin Bridges, go up State Street, you can hear them running all the way up there, get back up on the highway, and then come back down New York Avenue and just make a big circle in the evening. I don't know what can be done about it. I understand it's a tough hand, a tough issue. I will give the law to Kathy, and I will give also, I have a copy of the city ordinance on noise.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Bob. Anyone else in chambers? Now, if anyone attending remotely would like to address council, please use the raise hand feature. The city clerk will recognize and unmute one person at a time, and you'll have five minutes.
I do not see any hands raised.
Thank you, Kathy. That brings us to correspondence. Do we have any correspondence tonight?
We do not.
Moving on to our consent agenda. That the claims as enumerated in General Fund Warrant 5-2024 in the amount of $570,943.34, and Library Warrant Number 5-2024 in the amount of $0, and Capital Fund Warrant Number 5-2024 in the amount of $668,816.50, and Community Development Fund Warrant Number 5-2024 in the amount of $0, and Community Renewal Fund Warrant Number 5-2024 in the amount of $0, as audited, be and the same hereby our order paid by some. Kathy, please call the roll.
Mayor Tulley?
Yes.
Councillor Selly?
Yes.
Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Councillor Scamperley?
Yes.
Councillor Stevenson?
Yes.
Councillor Trim?
Yes.
Councillor Weaver?
Yes.
Approved.
We do not have any appointments tonight, so that brings us to items for council action. Our first item of business will be read by Public Works Director Shane Brown.
A resolution calling for a public hearing on local law to amend 181-1 of the Augsburg Municipal Code entitled "Collection of Yard Waste." Be resolved that proposed local law of the year 2024 entitled amendment to the Augsburg Municipal Code 181-1 entitled "Collection of Yard Waste", be it here and introduced before the City Council of the City of Augsburg, New York, and be it resolved that the City Council hold a public hearing on said proposed local law at the City Council Chambers, 334th Street, Augsburg, New York, at 6:00 p.m. on Monday, March 25, 2024. And be it further resolved that the city clerk give notice to such public hearing by publication in newspaper so designated for the publication of legal notices at least seven days before the hearing date of the notice setting forth the time and place and description describing the proposed local law in summary form.
Would a member of council like to introduce his?
I'll move that.
One second. Moving second, and any discussion?
I realize that this is just for the sake of a public hearing, but could you please just recap some of the changes to that law so that everyone in attendance and listening could understand those?
Yep, we're asking to put a beginning date on it so that it's first Sunday, I think it's in April, maybe, to start placing the debris out. It's also asking to remove the midsummer pickup and put a start date on the fall pickup, and it's also asking to put penalties in place that people place it out beforehand.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions, Shane. That way, can't answer them now, we can answer them maybe later. I know that the company was coming from Watertown and taking a lot of the larger stuff away and chipping a lot of our branches and things like that. And they're using it in the bioenergy factory that they had there for Ford Drum, and of course, Governor made them close it down. It would seem like, what about a local company? There's a local company here that's moving into Echo. They do the chipping, current.
That's who used to come and chip it all the way for us for free.
Oh, they were, so are they doing it now?
I got a quote last year from them. Which, Paul, was, the pile was smaller, they won $15,000 just to chip it and leave it on site.
They don't want the?
Nope, they don't want, they have no use for the project anymore. So before, there was an agreement, they came and chipped it and hauled it away. We gave them the wood for free, and then they hauled it to Watertown.
Oh, because they were getting paid for it.
They were making money on the other end, so it was worth them coming in. I did reach out to another company in Syracuse, I'm waiting on a vote back from them. I think it should be closer, probably a little more because of their travel time. But that's what's going to start, you know, we're going to start filling up, and then the D.C., I'm afraid, is going to tell us that we're done.
You say with chipping the on-site would be at the Echo?
No, it would be at our landfill, and we'd just have to push it over the hill. It reduced the size of it, but it's.
That was 12? You said 12 or 15?
It was 15 last summer when he came and gave me a vote, Mr. Kern.
Any other discussion?
Yes, I am in agreement with most of this, and I'll vote for the public hearing. But I'm not going to vote for this law until after I see what the actual fees and penalty schedule is, or what a proposed fee and penalty schedule is.
Yes.
I'm also a little bit confused when we talk about yard waste. I am not in favor of the city picking up grass clippings, but I notice that that's not listed as yard waste. And I want to see the city still allow yard waste to be taken to the landfill for free. I'm not, I'm not land waste, grass clippings. I'm not so concerned with the branches and the trees and stuff like that. In fact, if it costs us to get rid of them, then that should go back onto the landowner or the taxpayers. If we eliminate the ability to do something with lawn waste, excuse me, grass clippings, we're going to find the same situation we had a few years ago, where you have great big piles in certain areas of the city and neighbors complaining about the smell.
Yeah, I think our intention is to charge for larger trees and brush at the landfill. Like, stuff contractors would take down that we wouldn't normally pick up on the side of the street.
I'd like to see that spelled out.
Okay.
The other concern I have, and it also goes with our snow removal, is set yard waste within five day, five businesses, five business days from the date of the mailing of such notice. Given the state of our post office today, five days is not enough. I know of at least two instances of the snow removal where the snow removal was done before the landowner got the notice in the mail. And I don't know what the solution to that is, sort of sending out certified mail and changing that to date of receipt. Again, the organization I belong to, we send things out certified mail, and it amazes me the people that don't pick their mail up for a month at a time. So I'm not sure there's a solution to that, but I'm not sure five days is an adequate amount of time. That's, that's all I have on that. I'm not, I'm not opposed to this, I want to know what the proposed fee schedule is before I'll vote to approve the law.
Okay.
What other, what other firms other than Kern in the area? I mean, you're reaching out to Syracuse.
I don't know of any. It's a tough market right now.
Yeah, so you're looking at the large, you're looking at wider width, obviously. You know, any potential storm damage, any large limbs is basically what you're, is what we're looking to.
Yeah. Well, we shred everything, everything that we can. When we pick up brush or anything, we could pick out any, any branch sizes we put into the pile. So it takes it all, when they were taking it, they were taking it all away, so we put everything we could in there from, you know, two inches to 36 inches.
Do we have any composting abilities?
Not at the area we're at, we probably could look into it down here, the only other area we would have would be the shooting range down on the backside of that, but that becomes nifty situation, too.
Don't get me wrong, I'm definitely not proposing that we get into the business. But Midwestern city where my son lives, the city picks up the grass clippings. They actually provide a bin. They pick up the grass clippings, they compost it, and it's available to the city residents for free once it's done. Now, we are not in a financial situation where we could start doing that, but I'm wondering if there might be a private business or somebody that might consider doing something like that. I don't know. I haven't done any homework on it or researched on it either, but this is something we could consider, if somebody approaches somebody and says something about it.
Shane, I'm not familiar with the operation at the clearing debris landfill. I mean, is there somebody, one of our employees there who would monitor traffic coming in to be able to determine whether a fee is to be assessed or not?
Yeah, usually during the summer months, there's early spring to late fall, it's manned.
Okay.
Just, if they're going to charge us that much money, how much does a chip or shredder cost? Decent size.
I looked them up last week. I mean, one in the early 2000s, about $2,007, $250,000.
Wow.
Yeah. With so much size that they brought, that they bring in.
Right.
Would we have any use for that mulch if we did our own chipping shredding?
I don't know if there would be a market.
I don't see much of that.
I know some farmers use it for bedding, but I don't know if they would be willing to pay, or if they would just come and take it away for free. I don't know if there is a market for it.
The Amish give sawdust away.
Yeah.
So, just got to pull up and take all you want.
Any other discussion? Kathy, call the roll, please.
Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Councillor Scamperley?
Yes.
Councillor Stevenson?
Yes.
Councillor Trim?
Yes.
Councillor Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Tulley?
Yes.
Councillor Selly?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by interim city manager Andrea Smith.
This is a resolution authorizing the submission of a fiscal year 2025 community project funding request through the 21st District of New York Congresswoman Elise Stefanic.
I'll move that.
Second.
Any discussion? And again, what this resolution is, provides the estimated cost of about $2.3 million for this funding request to help deal with the pump station rehabilitation and improvement at the South Water Street Pump Station and the Heavy Industrial Pump Station. Kathy, please call the roll.
Councillor Scamperley?
Yes.
Councillor Stevenson?
Yes.
Councillor Trim?
Yes.
Councillor Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Tulley?
Yes.
Councillor Selly?
Yes.
Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will also be read by interim city manager Andrea Smith.
This is a resolution authorizing the submission of a fiscal year 2025 congressionally-directed spending request through the Office of New York Senator Christian Gillibrand.
I'll move that. Second. Any discussion?
Again, just to Kathy, please.
Yes, in this funding request, we're requesting consideration of funding for the replacement of a 2005 fire engine. Estimated cost $1 million.
Thank you.
Kathy, please call the roll.
Councillor Stevenson?
Yes.
Councillor Trim?
Yes.
Councillor Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Tulley?
Yes.
Councillor Selly?
Yes.
Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Councillor Scamperley?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by interim city manager Andrea Smith.
This is a resolution authorizing the submission of a fiscal year 2025 congressionally-directed spending request through the Office of New York Senator Chuck Schumer.
Move that. One second. Discussion. And again, the funding request, again, through Senator Schumer's office is also for the replacement of this fire engine, 2005 fire engine. Kathy, please call the roll.
Councillor Trim?
Yes.
Councillor Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Tulley?
Yes.
Councillor Selly?
Yes.
Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Councillor Scamperley?
Yes.
Councillor Stevenson?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by interim city manager Andrea Smith.
It's a resolution calling for public notice and public hearing on the city's proposed Restore New York 8 Grant Application and Property Assessment List for the Strategic Demolition, Deconstruction, Rehabilitation, and/or Reconstruction of Vacant, Abandoned, Condemned, and Surplus Properties within the city's designated brownfield opportunity area.
I'll move that.
Second that.
Andrea, do you mind going through the highlights of this, please?
Yes. So the public hearing would be held on the 25th day of March, that's the very next regular council meeting at 6:00 p.m. And the property assessment list includes two properties, both owned by the private sector, for which the city would submit, potentially submit an application on their behalf. The first property is 119135 West River Street. This is property owned by At the Docks LLC, and the proposed project is demolition, reconstruction, and rehabilitation of a hotel and mixed-use resort. The proposed project cost is $10 million, and they would be seeking an award under the Special Projects portion of the Restore 8 funding seeking $9 million. The second project for consideration is 202 Ford Streets, property owned by Lynn and David Glevins, and this is for rehabilitation, reconstruction, and partial demolition associated with the development of residential apartments and commercial space at 202 Ford Street.
Thank you. Any comments or questions?
I'd like to encourage the public to get out and speak positively towards both of these projects. Let the people who are applying for grants know that the community is behind them.
Anybody else? Yes, I would encourage that also, so I'm noticed that as well, so thank you. Kathy, please call the roll.
Councillor Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Tulley?
Yes.
Councillor Selly?
Yes.
Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Councillor Scamperley?
Yes.
Councillor Stevenson?
Yes.
Councillor Trim?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by Public Works Director Shane Brown.
A resolution authorizing interim city manager to execute a site access agreement with St. Lawrence Seaway RSA Cellar Partnership.
I'll move that. Second. Any questions or comments?
And this is to, basically, assess the tower to see, or, excuse me, our water, water tower, to see if we could put a further tower for cell phones on top of that.
That's correct. I think they're looking, are they looking to go on the side and not the top?
Right.
Yes.
Possibly looking for.
Questions or comments? Kathy, please call the roll.
Mayor Tulley?
Yes.
Councillor Selly?
Yes.
Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Councillor Scamperley?
Yes.
Councillor Stevenson?
Yes.
Councillor Trim?
Yes.
Councillor Weaver?
Yes.
Approved.
And that brings us to old business, and we will be going with interim city manager Andrea Smith.
Thank you, ma'am. This is just a public announcement to follow up the conversation at our last council meeting. We will be having a public meeting this Wednesday, March 13, to begin conversations about the formation of a strategic planning committee. It will be right here in council chambers from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. The intent of this meeting is to provide an overview of upcoming grants that we anticipate to open this year, or that we may see throughout the year, and an opportunity for the public to ask questions, and for those that are interested to sign up to be members of the Strategic Planning Committee that we will learn a little bit more about the expectations of that at the meeting on Wednesday. So that's Wednesday, the 13th, at 6:00 p.m.
Any questions or comments from council?
I look forward to coming in. Witnessing.
No, we look forward to the community's participation in this, whether it be just to volunteer ideas and we're possibly considering serving on the Strategic Planning Committee. Any other old business to bring before council? All right, brings us to new business. Anyone have any new business to bring before council?
I have one item, Your Honor.
Yes.
We have spoken before, and I think that we've just been so busy, it got off our radar a little bit. We had talked about possibly recognizing city employees that left service over the last number of years that didn't have the recognition that we typically would give. I would like to see us discuss a date to possibly do that in April or May, and see if we could give that recognition that's well-deserved.
All right, why don't we target the second meeting in May for that, to give us a little bit of time? Or ground up the priorities, but yeah, there's probably quite a few to recognize, yes. Thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
Can I piggyback off of what Jen said? You know, Mayor, thank you for recognizing members of the community already. You know, people may not know it, but the mayor has been sending out letters commending people in this community that have had some significant achievements. And I know a gentleman sitting right here, I know you're, you probably don't want me to do this, and he's pretty humble, but he, thank you, got Sportsman of the Year last year for New York State. And Bob Flavin started the wall eye restocking program with his partner Hank Bouchard a number of years ago. Yeah, yeah, and what a tremendous impact that has had on our wall eye fish right here. And so, just like to publicly say thank you, I know it was last year under a different administration. It would have slipped by, if you probably weren't even here tonight, but I'm sure the mayor would.
Yeah, I would certainly echo Councillor Scamperley's comments, and your contributions to the community have been respected, Bob, thank you.
Just to piggyback that as well, if I can. It goes far, it goes far beyond just the wall eye restocking as well. It goes, Bob's been an advocate of the environment and game and sportsmen, outdoor sportsmen for as long as I can remember. And veterans as well, yes, thank you very much, yeah, without question. And, you know, I think my first introduction to you was around 2006. I think when I was part of the waterfall group, and, yeah, and his knowledge is valued, and it was very duly recognized on your behalf by the state of New York.
I'm seeing where it's up for this year. Oh, yeah.
Another one.
Oh, good.
Good.
Good. Very good, another community member. Yeah.
Storm, Jen, something?
Yeah, in addition to the employees that left, we need to recognize those that achieved significant milestones, like 10, 15 years of service. And I also feel strongly, though I disagreed with much of their agenda, that the former mayor, the former councillors should be recognized with some type of certificate for their service to the city. I know when I left the council previously, I got a national certificate. I was told it came from the mayor. Maybe that's something Mike can put together and just recognize the service for $200 a month, at least we could do.
Yeah, we'll, we'll check into how that was handled in the past, and.
I can make a copy of the one that I was giving.
That would be helpful.
Thank you.
Any other new business? So that brings us to items for discussion, and we'll start with interim city manager Andrea Smith.
I just wanted to give the council and the public an update on the New York Swims program. There should be an S, sorry, on your agenda. This is a grant program that was brought to our attention by Mr. Doug Loffler at a meeting late last year, first thing this year. And it's a program that we have looked into. It was included in the governor's executive budget proposal, and there was a webinar on this program just last week. The state has a request for information out now, seeking input from communities that may be interested in applying to learn more about their needs and what types of projects they may, would be willing to put forward when the program opens this year. And so, we are looking at completing the RFI and submitting that. The purpose of the request for information is to help formulate the actual grant request, the notification of funding that will eventually be announced later this year. So the funding is not yet available to apply for, but the state is seeking input from communities, and we're actively engaged in that process, and we will be submitting a response.
Any questions, comments?
Could you go into a little, I'm sure they discussed some of the aspects of maintenance as well. I mean, they talk of new structures and pools for this proposed aspect of the budget, the state budget, her budget, I should say. But they, I didn't read into too much of it about general maintenance and applying for funds for maintaining what we have here, or adding to what we could possibly.
Yeah, so a number of the communities did ask about that because there isn't a lot of detail about what might be available for repairs or renovations to existing facilities, although that does appear to be a significant need. So I'm hopeful that the feedback that communities like Augsburg provides will help ensure that those types of funds are available. It's clear that funding will be available for more innovative solutions, and the state's really making a big push to learn more about communities that are considering pop-up pools or pools in, pools, use that term loosely, in natural water bodies. So utilizing rivers, lakes, and streams for swimming and bathing areas. They're very interested in learning more about proposals like that. There was even a community that spoke about designing, redesigning a quarry in their community to incorporate swimming. So the state was very excited to learn more about that. So there's a big push for innovative solutions other than just pools, but there's certainly a need for rehabilitation and renovation of existing facilities. Some communities spoke of historic pools, you know, built in the early 1900s that they're looking to reopen and preserve. So I hope that by providing information from communities like ours who have that level of need, we'll, we'll ensure that we will be eligible to apply. But there's not a lot of information out there for those types of projects, just yet.
Well, obviously, it'll still have to be negotiated through the budget process, but, you know, again, before I came tonight, I was reading through it, and there wasn't a whole lot of anything really promising, but recognizing that, you know, the heavy negotiations will pick up here in the next two weeks, it'll be, it'll be interesting to see. I'm just wondering if there's anybody that, maybe through Assemblyman Gray and Senator Walzick's office, that we might be able to, through, possibly. and Senator Walzick's office that we might be able to, through possibly the Assemblyman's contacts that he's had with the, with the executive chamber to be able to promote maybe some of that in some aspect. You know, years ago, I think I spoke to you about a kind of a fundraising effort for our pool. It's something that, I'm not going to get into it now, but it would be something that would be positive for the community and for many, even, you know, a fundraising aspect to be able to assist and maintain our, our pool and, and be able to have some backdoor, you know, some, not backdoor, but some backup funds for, for initial maintenance that comes down the line. I know that we're on a shoestring to begin with and put some possible fundraising on the outside through people that live here now and former residents of the city of Augsburg that have, that are generous and donating to other causes might be an avenue to pursue down the road. You know, it's just, I'm just kind of throwing it out there for now, but I'd like to dive into that a little deeper at some point.
Thank you, Mike. Any other items for discussion?
I have one as well.
Councillor Powers first, go ahead, Mike.
I noticed today in, in reading through some of the, through the Times Union that with the budget enhancing, we just passed a resolution last time promoting the governor's executive budget for the housing stock, for the housing. It's, it's quite an expansive aspect of her housing proposal that fell on deaf ears last year through the negotiating process. But it appears that the one-house bills are coming into play now through the Senate and the Assembly, and they're, they're generating some discussions regarding her housing initiative. And I, I'm afraid that some of it may have an impact on some of our, some of the resolution that we had passed last meeting, and that may need to be addressed if this comes into fruition in her budget. I'm just kind of throwing it out there. There was an article, my, there was an article in, in the Times Union. It's called Capital Confidential. I've been a member of it for, I don't know how long. My, my membership expired this morning, so when I went to read it, I couldn't pull it up. I wanted to flip it to everybody, and I will. I just have to find out how to accept the terms. And it's trying to do it just before I got here, but there, there's language in there that I think is relevant to, to our resolution, which is just, it's just housekeeping type stuff. It's not, it's not anything drastic. I just wanted to put that on your radar.
Thank you. Ken?
So I just wanted to announce to the public and endless group here in the city, the DEC is holding on Thursday night a presentation on the Lake Ontario and St. Lawrence River black bass fishery. They're doing this in Alexandria Bay at the high school at 6:00, and they will be taking questions. And I was reading it on the, on the DEC website. On Lake Ontario alone, it's a $546 million a year industry. On the St. Lawrence River, now all summer long, we're seeing the bass fishermen here. It's $134 million of fishery industry on the St. Lawrence River. We're right in the middle of it. We're in, and there are some things that I disagree with personally, and I plan on asking some questions. But regardless, I think it's very important for the city to try and tap into this and maybe try and bring some of these, these groups here. Looking at our budget, of course, I mean, our two biggest sources of revenue are property taxes and sales tax. And I think any and every way we can think about trying to raise sales tax so that we don't have to raise property taxes, maybe even lower, is something we need to do. And we had a city committee established around 2018 or 19 involving the sportsman's club and a lot of interest groups in city and people and businesses. And we were set to have major league fishing in 2020. That was canceled by the administration then. And, and that would have been the start of it and put us on the map, ESPN, right on TV, the whole nine yards. And I'd like to start working towards bringing that, that here. So I'm going to see what I can find out on Thursday night, and I'd like to invite the public to go as well, if you have comments or questions. That's a lot of money sitting right in front of us. And, and I think, I think we need to start paying attention and hopefully move in that direction and bring some, some of that here. If you look at Waddington, Waddington, they're doing wonderful, another river community. It's a, either Bass Masters, or at least a week long, now Messina's doing it. They have concerts, fireworks, the whole nine yards. We're bringing people in, they're spending money at businesses, restaurants, hotels, everything else. And, and, and some of them are staying here in Augsburg or just outside of Augsburg. We know they're spending money here. I see them at the docks. I talk to them all the time. And, but we could get more, I think, out of that if we can just, if we can get into one of these organizations and, and have some tournaments here. I'd, I'd like to see us do that. So I'll be doing that Thursday night, and again, it's Thursday night at 6:00 at Alexandria Central School on 34 Bolton Ave in Alex Bay. And you can, you can ask questions at the DEC and the other groups that'll be there. So I just think it's important that we look at that.
Thank you for sharing that, Ken. Anyone else? I do have a few items to speak to. On Friday, March 1st, Andrea, Councillor Stevenson, Weaver and I visited the Augsburg Neighborhood Center upon opening their new location at 419 and 1/2 Fourth Street. The center's director, Tina Keller, greeted us and walked us around their facility. This new location provides the center a needed increase in floor space. It is organized to aid individuals seeking assistance based on the point system used to determine eligibility for benefits. Tina informed us of the increase in the numbers served by the center since Augsburg Salvation Army closed. So I encourage councillors and the public who have not yet visited the center's location to do so and keep them in mind for support. Last Friday, Andrea and I met with Ben Dixon, Executive Director of the St. Lawrence County Chamber of Commerce, and remotely with Laura Pearson, the county chamber's business development coordinator, who recently celebrated her 10th anniversary, working on behalf of Augsburg for the Chamber of Commerce. It was primarily a get-to-know-you meeting during which we talked about ways the Chamber of Commerce can serve the community. We reviewed the calendar events for chamber-sponsored activities in Augsburg to ensure we can jointly promote them. This week, Laura will be visiting city businesses to ask them to renew their membership or to join the Chamber of Commerce. Membership declined during the pandemic, as we might expect, and the chamber is looking to rebuild its membership in Augsburg and throughout St. Lawrence County. Next, members of council and staff were able to join in the groundbreaking ceremony last Thursday at the Augsburg International Airport. It was a day to extend our local appreciation to Governor Hokel, who was represented by Transportation Commissioner Dominguez for the state's $18 million grant to help finance renovation work at the airport. The city looks forward to working with the Augsburg Bridge and Port Authority to bring this project to a successful conclusion for the benefit of the city, the North Country, and our Canadian neighbors. And the city has informed the St. Lawrence County Board of Elections. They may use the Nabiski Center for early voting in 2024. And lastly, a quick plug for friends of all of ours. The Augsburg Boys and Girls Club is returning with Expo this year, March 23 and 24, out at the Dome at OFA. Anything else for discussion? That brings us to citizen participation. At this time, if anyone attending in person would like to address council, please come down to the podium and you will have two minutes. Now, if anyone attending remotely would like to address council, please use the raise hand feature. The city clerk will recognize and unmute one person at a time, and you will have two minutes.
I do not see any hands raised.
Right, next, I make a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss the proposed acquisition, sale, or lease of real property, or the proposed acquisition of securities, or sale or exchange of securities, and the medical, financial credit, or employment history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation. I so move. Kathy, please call the roll.
Councillor Selly?
Yes.
Councillor Powers?
Yes.
Councillor Scamperley?
Yes.
Councillor Stevenson?
Yes.
Councillor Trim?
Yes.
Councillor Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Tully?
Yes.
Approved.
And I note, there may be action following the executive session this evening.
Mayor, just for the students that are attending, would you just take a second and let them know what an executive session is? Would that be okay?
So for the community attending tonight and those remotely, there are certain matters where it's appropriate for the city council to discuss in private of certain individuals or, or businesses, whatever might not be spoken about publicly when we're conducting business with them. And so, as well as in dealing with personnel issues affecting city staff. So for that reason, we meet in executive session to maintain that privacy as is allowed under New York State Open Meetings law.
Thank you.
Not bad for winging it, huh?
Yeah.
Better, I think you'd be stating that off the cheap.
Yeah.
Are you sure that it wasn't necessary?
I know, I know. I wanted to do it last year, in those cases. Nice, nice. Yeah, thank you.
Just hang it on the needle. It's really an effort to find out, to be a member of the strategic planning committee to talk about downtown projects and grants that might impact downtown. But you're welcome to talk. I mean, I don't know, I know that you've asked on that. Right. Right.
We have no action, but we have two statements to make. First, city council has reviewed with staff the response to the RFP for 17 Main Street parcel A submitted by At The Docs and has decided not to accept the proposal submitted. The proposal from At The Docs called for its purchase of this parcel in the amount of $10,000 for construction of a warehouse with offices and several parking spaces. This does not meet with city council's vision as to how parcel A might be developed. At the same time, the city is continuing its discussion with At The Docs that is expected to result in their purchase of 17 Main Street parcel B by May 31st. Our second statement is relative to the topic of considering opening City Hall to the public Monday through Friday, 8 to 4. Currently it's open Monday through Thursday, 8 to 4. In 2020, City Hall had 15 staff in the building and now currently eight staff in the building on a daily basis. And given our current staffing situation, city council supports keeping City Hall open to the public Monday through Thursday, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. This allows City Hall staff to work on Fridays to catch up on work that accumulates during the week. We will reevaluate as the situation might change in the future. So with that, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.